Leadership lounge, is that everybody coming tonight? Is that everybody? Would you like to go ahead and get your picture done now? That way y'all don't have to worry about afterwards. Or if some of y'all want to dip, you know, early? I know how a few of y'all are. All right, y'all come up to the front, we'll get a picture real quick.
That's the story, we're sticking to it. How's your day, Mayor Pro Tem?
Good, it's over with now.
We hear this is a short meeting, don't trick us.
My meetings are quick.
Hey, yeah, of course. Don't you need to be right here?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, okay. I can hold it up, do the hokey pokey.
He came to lunch on Monday. He came to our lunch on Monday.
That's all right.
Thank you, appreciate it. Pickleball. No, we won the point one to match. But hold now, can get over this thing, I will have done something.
You ready? Eric, we're about to start. We're about to start. Tim, will you pray? I'd like to call to order the August 21st, 2025, meeting of the mayor and council. I'd like to ask Councilman Carroll if he would lead us in the pledge allegiance and say a prayer. Word of prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight again thankful for all the blessings that you continue to provide us. And yet again, sir, we need your help, your calm healing hand on our city and its citizens. There's still a lot of folks out there hurting, and they need all the help they can get. We ask all this in your son's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, the minutes from the August 7th, 2025, regular city council meeting will be forthcoming. First up, for bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. We have a consideration of bids for electrical improvements to wells one and five at the gas road water treatment plant. Jason Barnes, our utility director, will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So these wells one and five are the original wells that the plant was built in 1992. So for this electrical improvements, we did an evaluation and programmed to improve the reliability and capacity needs of the wellfields. The program elements include the assessment and the minor civil and electrical improvements of wells one and five. We developed the contract documents and project specs and provided general coordination. The work performed is replacing the existing electrical and control components, some painting, minor silver improvements, and also installing a new generator connection box and pole mounting lighting. On July 8th, 2025, utilities department advertised for bids for the project to upgrade the electrical systems for wells one and five and to provide minor silver improvements. A mandatory pre-bid conference was held on July 16th of this year, and two potential bidders were attending. Instructions were given to the bidders to submit a base bid that included both the wells and the SCADA system services included on their general contractor. One sealed bid was received on July 29th of this year, was submitted by standard contractors, and that amount was $997,006.50. The staff recommends to approve the base bid submitted by standard contractors in an amount of $997.06, which includes a 5% allowance for unforeseen circumstances. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, y'all have any questions for Jason? All right, CA9, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second? Second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, approved. All right, thank you, Jason, appreciate that. Next up, we have Jason Barnes as well to come up to consideration of the approved proposal for the proposal for Phase Three of the flow monitoring program support project.
Yeah, so this, in 2020, this is part of our EPD consent order. The city of Valdosta was required to perform an assessment of our entire wastewater collection system. The city purchased 15 flow monitors, and we leased additional 15 temporary monitors, performed the two phases of the flow monitoring, with Phase One being the Whiffalcoochie wastewater treatment plant basin, and Phase Two was the Mud Creek wastewater treatment plant basin. City of Valdosta contracted with Barge later in 2020 to provide professional engineering services in the support of complying with the consent order requirements. In 2024, the original meter contractor, ADS, was contacted to perform field visits on the 15 city-owned meters and replace batteries as needed. One thing we found, the visit we did the assessment on was, we revealed that 13 out of the 15 flow meters were due to corrosion or damage over the last four years and would occur in more significant cause for replacement. These flow meters are the first step in improving our collection system and reducing spills and overflows. This is possible because we can take the data provided by the flow meter, imply it to our lift station flow data in order to be able to zone in on problem areas throughout the city. I will mention this would also use this to locate heavy INI inflow and infiltration areas. The city, the next step for the city was reinstatement of the flow monitoring network. Barge Design Solutions will contract with ADS Environmental Services, perform diagnostics on the existing network and make repairs if needed or replace any meters that are not savagable. The total cost for another 12 months of flow monitoring will depend on how many of these 15 meters can be repaired and not require replacement with a new meter. We really don't know, if we can save the money on that side, then we can, you know, we can have the 12-month monitoring part of this, but depends on if we got to repair it, and hopefully we don't have to replace all of them. The staff recommends to approve the proposal submitted by Barge Design Services in an amount of $121,750 for reinstatement of the flow monitoring network Phase Three. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, well, Jason, so the $121,000, is that for the replacement? Is that the replacement cost of all of them, in case we have to replace them all?
Yes, sir, it is.
Any other questions for Jason? Counsel, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this bid for $121,750.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion approved. All right, next up, we have a consideration of a request to approve the proposed SPOS 9 agreement. Richard Hardy, city manager, will present.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. The mayor and council approved the city of Valdosta SPOS 9 referendum on July 24th, after which it was forwarded to Lowndes County for review. Consistent with the process followed by other cities within the county, the county reviewed all referendums, compiled them, and returned each to the respective city as an agreement for approval. Once all cities in Lowndes County approved, this agreement will be placed on the ballot for the November 4th election. Staff recommends that council approve the SPOS 9 agreement as presented.
Thank you, Richard. Counsel, y'all have any questions on this item? All right, yeah?
Richard, do you have, provided a list to the public of the items that we were requesting to be on the SPOS?
Yes, that's going out.
Okay.
It's a part of this agenda package.
So it'll go out tomorrow?
We'll make sure it's in the news, but it was part of the SPOS package.
Okay.
Part of the council package.
All right, any other questions? All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, I would like to approve the request as presented.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? All right, motion approved. Next up, we have local funding and requests. Considerations of request to approve a consultant for a comprehensive compensation study for the city of Valdosta. Jenny Boyer, HR Director, will present.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. A request for proposal process was conducted to secure a consultant to perform a comprehensive total compensation study for the city of Valdosta. This comp study, the consultant will work with city staff to evaluate our pay structures, benefits, and other non-financial rewards, to benchmark all of our city positions against comparable employers, and to review our job descriptions for accuracy and compliance. They will then provide recommendations to us that will help enable us to remain competitive in attracting and retaining qualified employees. We received 11 qualified sealed RFPs. These proposals were independently reviewed by the committee, which consisted of myself, Finance Director Chuck Dinkins, Assistant City Manager Catherine Ammons, Councilman Tim Carroll, and Councilman Nick Harden. Upon the completion of the independent evaluations, we invited three finalists for onsite presentations. At the conclusion of those presentations, the committee selected Evergreen Solutions as the preferred partner to complete the compensation study. Their total not to exceed fixed cost for their proposal is $58,500, which is within the budgeted amount in the fiscal 2026 budget. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions, counsel? Counsel, momentily?
I do have some questions. They are multiple, multiple questions. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion, make a motion that we table this until we can get some of these questions. I have quite a few questions to ask about this. I just make a motion that we table it until our next council meeting.
All right, we have a motion to table this to our next council meeting. To the next council meeting, do we have a second? She has several questions that she needs to have answered, so. Is there a? If we table it, is this messing up our timeframe, or how does?
Let's get a second first.
Second, yeah, okay. Can I get a second to table, sorry?
It does.
What date would that be?
September the 9th, I believe.
11th.
I think it's the 9th.
The 9th is the work session, the 11th is the meeting.
Yeah, 11th.
So what table till the 9th?
11th.
11th.
Well, we have a motion on, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. All right, any discussion? The question I had was, is that by tabling this, is there a timeframe? Is there something that we need to, like, if we approve it tonight, this is going to push things? How does that, because we don't know the?
Sure, it pushes in the respect that, you know, every, every day that we don't move this forward is a day that we lose, you know? Would moving it one council meeting invalidate their bid or anything like that? It would not. One question, and, you know, if I may, is, Councilwoman, without knowing what your questions are, this is simply a, to pick our partner, not to have anything about the specifics of the study, what they're going to look at. We could answer those questions, no matter what partner we pick, we would be doing the same process. So, you know, without knowing what your questions are, if they're specific to the process, I might recommend that we, you know, reconsider the motion to table. I know that's not in my purview, but if there's questions about this particular vendor, then, you know, that is for council to take up.
I guess my other thing would be is, we have a special call meeting next week. Is it possible to table it till then, so it's not so far off?
We gotta get, we gotta get approval to table it.
But we're still in discussion, that's why I was asking if, we have not set a date to table. So I'm just asking, is it possible? Counselwoman, until, do you want to set it? Do you want to set it for the council, the council meeting on September 11th? Or would you like to set it for special call meeting?
Yes, it's just that I might need a couple days to ask.
Special call meeting is next week on the Thursday.
That's fine with me. I mean, that date is fine with me.
28th of next Thursday. All right, so we have a?
Excuse me, they won't be here next?
Yeah, neither one, Catherine or I, will be here, and I am, we're both out most of next week at conferences, so we will not be available to answer Councilwoman's questions, and I don't want to feel like we've rushed her.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? All right. All opposed? All right, there we go. All right, now we're back to the original.
Make a motion to approve this request as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Have questions?
Second. Second.
Question?
All right, now discussion?
Okay, first of all, I was, my question was, a lot of time, what we're talking about, we had this committee. The committee was, we decided to have this, is that an action? One of our action items from that, we did say we were going to get our committee approved for this?
Yes, ma'am, this was an action item from the strategic summit, the mayor council strategic summit in the spring, that we were going to, we were going to undertake an RFP for a comp study, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when we did that, because my question is, what was, when they, I guess, put the committee together?
Yes, ma'am.
And what he did, a lot of times, I thought, part of our policy, we needed to know that they were putting together who was going to be on it, timeframe, how long it would take to do this. And I just did not get any information about that, to know about it. And also the specifics, when we was doing this, some of the things that you were going to be considering, we didn't talk about it to let us know about it. And I really think, you know, looking at some of the things you did, maybe even with some of the people that, well, it could have been a biased situation, the reason they put the people on the committee like that or something? I mean, it was not discussed, like, when we, when you put the committee together.
Yes, ma'am, and I would, with all due respect, if you believe there was bias, I would like to know what that means.
Bias means?
No, I would like to know why you believe there was bias.
Who were the people, who selected the people to be on the committee?
Catherine and I did.
Who?
Catherine and I did.
Okay. You and Catherine, could you tell me why y'all selected the ones you selected?
I certainly can. We selected Councilman Carroll because he is the senior member of the city council and has been through a comp study before. He has history, he has experience. We selected Councilman Harden because he is the newest member on the council. He is a business owner, he has fresh eyes and fresh perspective.
Okay, and that's one thing I was looking at. Like you said, Councilman Carroll has been on there before, and I was just looking at the situation and the decisions that were made. It looked like it worked well for things going on with the city. I mean, again, to get a, have another comprehensive studies, some of the decisions that were made, maybe were not some of the best decisions.
I mean, there have been no decisions made, other than to embark on a comprehensive study, and we received the RFPs for that. We had a competitive bid process, we went through this as we do any other RFP. Councilman Harden, would you look like you would like to say something?
Yes, we actually, so these, the companies that we vetted, you know, we went through a process, it was actually, what, 12, 13 companies that we went through, we had, we, I mean, thoroughly went through each company. Then we came back again and had a one-on-one, in-person meeting with all of these companies. We have not decided, they, with us choosing Evergreen, that doesn't, that's the company that we're using, but that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to use them to do, well, we're going to use them, but we're not going to, what am I trying to say? That is not?
Accepting their recommendation.
They'll provide recommendations.
We're not accepting a recommendation, yes.
And those will come in front of council for approval.
It's not necessarily accepting their recommendation, but they are the company that we are choosing, we, as a group.
Right, so the committee decided that certain things going on, such as what, the income or whatever?
No, the, ma'am, basically what happened was, we sent out an RFP to select a company to come in and evaluate the city to do a comprehensive study. So all, currently, that's all we've done, is select a vendor to come out and do that. Once they complete the study, it will be brought back to the council to prove based off of their recommendations.
Why did the city have to get a consultant? Why couldn't the city and our staff, what can our staff do it?
Councilman, I would love to address that, for a couple of reasons. First and foremost is, while we are subject matter experts for the city of Valdosta, we are not subject matter experts for the wider region. We are?
For what reason, the wider?
The wider region, whether it's comparable cities within the state, you know, the, the employers that we compete with, within the region. Additionally, consultants have access to what everyone is doing for all of the organizations, cities, everybody that they work with. We know what we do. We know we provide a very robust benefits package of a pension. We know that our medical and insurance benefits are very, very generous. We know that our pay is probably not what we would like it to be, but what we don't have the expertise to do is to put the entire package together and say, here's how you benchmark against all of these organizations, all of these cities. You're in the 25th percentile, you're in the 77th percentile. We know what we are, but we don't know what everybody else are. This is an outside, independent, objective partner consultant to tell us, here are the data, here are the facts, here's what we recommend.
Okay, and that's what I hear what you're saying, that's my question mainly. I have worked with the staff, and the staff have come up here to us many times and told us, we have gone out and we did, the staff have gotten data together.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, I missed that?
The staff have gotten data themselves together, and the staff made the decision, rather than getting somebody else to consult on why we needed this and that. And that's what I was looking at. Why did we have to get a consulting group? Why do we, you know, our committee, when our committee got there, they look, they look at what other cities are doing, what the surrounding area, what the region, what is the medium income, media whatever, anyway. Our staff can do that. So my thing is, why are we having to? You had a committee who can go and do that, but?
Our staff do not have the capability to perform that function.
They do not. So how can they determine when somebody is telling them something if that? If they don't know themselves, and somebody tells them any little thing? I mean, I think they do know how to do it, and they can compare. They've done it before, when we asked them, what is, what is going on other places? What are they doing and so forth? Our staff say, we have done this. They didn't ask for a consultant to get out and go do it. They got the information, put it together, looked at what we got going on with our city, what our, the city needed, and what's happening, and made the decision.
Councilman, we've not done that for a comp study. That is, that is the standard, to have that done outside. Additionally, in total transparency and frankness, I don't want to stand in front of you and say, city staff believes this is the path that we should move forward, and have questions of how did you decide? What makes you the expert? Why didn't we ask someone else? I'll just be very transparent about that.
When the last time we had one comprehensive study?
I believe it was 2015, Catherine?
2015.
2015.
10 years ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Howard?
I think the reason why we don't allow staff to do this to avoid what you said, bias. Because if, if you just pick staff to pick it out, and they say this department deserves a raise in this amount, and this department deserves a raise, then you're going to ask, why did they pick this department? So that's the reason why we get someone from the outside. Now, there's a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor, can we act on it?
Sure, sir, you can, I do have more questions. You may want to go and may want to stop it.
You only have a certain amount of time, Robert's ruled.
Are you phrasing that into a form of a motion?
It's a motion on the floor.
To suspend discussion and go to the vote? Is that the motion you're making? If so, I second.
Question?
We'll get a motion in a second.
So I question that, can I do that? Why would you stop me from asking my questions? I mean, I'm only trying to ask questions that's going to help the city and the citizens. So come on, make another motion, I'm going to question every one of them.
The question has been asked and answered. All we're doing is selecting a company to do the comp study. We're not, the company is going to bring the information back to council.
Okay, okay. Just want you to know, I'm going to, I'm not going to agree with it, because I think it's a bad decision.
Okay, well, your vote can tell us.
We're calling for the question.
There's a motion in the second that we need to vote on first. And that's to suspend discussion and go to the vote.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, now we're back to the original motion. All in favor of voting ongoing in approving the recommendation for Evergreen Solutions? All right, we have four, one opposed. Oh, you did, okay, all right, so now? Motion passes?
Thank you, council.
All right, next up, thank you, Jenny. Next up we have is, citizens to be heard. This is citizens to be heard portion of the meeting. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address so that we? We ask that you come forward and state your name and address so that we may have that for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is the council's policy to follow through with you and your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group of their, and their comments. Again, this one is sure that others have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Uh, you may come up, please. State your name and address.
Cecil Hardy.
Okay.
Cecil Hardy, ten oh six River Street.
Thank you.
Do I need to know my city council or?
You can't direct anything to them, you just talk as a whole, just, just.
Well, I'm here to see, can I get some assistance from the city of, uh, for my residential, my street? It's noisy, overcrowded traffic, the, the, uh, construction company. Can I play the noise that I have to listen to every day?
Yeah.
And I, in the evening, the train and, um, this is what I have to wake up to. From the, from the construction company. I've been at my place since nineteen sixty-nine. Construction company moved in in nineteen sixty-three. And he have just grown, grown over me. The city, they are just growing, growing, they're improving the streets, they're improving everything, except for trying to do anything for the citizens. They have just came through, made it a super highway, double yellow lines, nobody respect the speed, nobody, they pass each other. A young lady right down the street, a young kid. This is what I have to listen to, I'm just trying to talk over this noise, like I have to sleep over. My hearing going bad, this is this morning. Now, this is, uh, uh, just this afternoon, the rain coming down and, and this is what I have to listen to. Just, this is just at my front door. It's traffic, noise traffic, the speed, like I said, it's a speed, construction company. And nobody seemed to care or come out and try to do anything. I have asked the city over and over to come out and try to, they can move my horse, move the house back, it's room to move it back. It's room to just, you know, they improved everything, but we've been there since nineteen sixty-nine and we have put up with this fifty years of the city and the construction company. Not just me, the whole, no, I, I mean, I passed out flowers all over the neighborhood and everybody said it was coming out for the, for improvement, for improvement in that area. We have to deal with the train noise, the street noise, the company noise. And I just think the city should reach out and try to do something. There's no guardrails, there's no, nobody monitor the, the speed traffic. There's nothing going on over there to try to improve anything, but, you know, I, I'm sure you all may have heard about the kid that almost got killed. The drunk driver came through and, and it's just terrible over there. So I, I spoke with my city, well, no, no. So that's what I'm here for, to try to get some help. And somebody come out to do some kind of inspection.
Yes, thank you, we have your name and address.
Cecil Hardy.
Yes, sir, we have that and then we'll, uh, Richard will get with the, the correct department, uh, make sure they reach out to you and see what we can do.
Okay, I will, do appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming. Uh, any other citizens to be heard? All right, uh, seeing none, um, now, next up, we have city manager's report, Richard Hardy, city manager will present.
Thanks again, uh, Mayor Protem. A busy week, busy weeks, uh, ahead. Uh, next week, uh, we have the Citizens Fire Academy kickoff night, Tuesday, August the twenty-sixth. Get ready for an inside look at the life of a firefighter. The Citizens Fire Academy begins the twenty-sixth and runs through October the twenty-eighth with weekly sessions every Tuesday from six to eight PM at the Valdosta Fire Department Regional Training Facility, one thirty-seven Blanchard Street. This is your chance to experience hands-on training and see how our fire professionals keep Valdosta safe. Town hall on disaster preparedness hosted by Councilman Nick Harden. This would also take place Tuesday, August the twenty-sixth, six to seven thirty PM. Storm emergencies and unexpected can happen anytime. Are you ready? Councilman Nick Harding invites you to the city hall's multipurpose room for a community conversation on disaster readiness. Bring your questions, your neighbors, your ideas, together we can build a stronger, safer Valdosta. Also, Friday, August the twenty-ninth, we're sup, uh, supporting our Valdosta Homecoming Parade. It's time to celebrate Valdosta spirit. Join us in the homecoming parade with marches out of East Brookwood Drive at Drexel Park and rolls down North Patterson Street. The city is honored to support this tradition and we invite the entire community to come cheer, wave and show your Valdosta pride. I know the chief, the police chief won't allow, won't like me to say this, but a round of applause for the Valdosta Police Department and Chief Manahan for the ninth straight year.
We can do better than that. Nine years.
For the, for the ninth straight year, our department has achieved Khalil accreditation, a mark of excellence held by only the most professional law enforcement agencies in the nation. This milestone reflects dedication, discipline and the commitment to keeping Valdosta safe. Outstanding work, chief. Mayor Protem, that's all I have.
Richard, thank you for that information. Uh, any council comments? Do we have any council comments for this evening?
Yes.
All right.
Um, yeah, definitely, uh, big shout out to chief back there, man, that's good. Shout out to, uh, uh, all our staff and, um, and our, uh, management. Also want to, uh, acknowledge Jason Barnes. Um, we had a meeting with the Florida River Task Force on last week and, uh, Jason, we just wanted to commend you for that presentation. Um, it was, uh, great, we are working real hard to get our infrastructure together, um, you know, so that we can make sure our environment and our community is safe and, and, uh, so we definitely appreciate you and dedication that you have, uh, and just our entire staff, we thank y'all, definitely thank you guys. And also join us Tuesday, we need you there Tuesday, uh, for our hurricane or storm readiness and preparedness. Uh, we're trying to make sure that, uh, we are, uh, not reactive but proactive and just ready for, for everything, you know what I mean? We want to make sure that we are, uh, good to go if we are to have another storm, but we definitely appreciate all you guys.
Any other council comments? I do want to point out that, uh, we've already got the picture, but thank you to Leadership Lowndes for being with us tonight. Uh, thank you for everybody else, all the citizens as well, coming out tonight on this rainy evening. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I was gonna leave to you, but hey, I figured.
No, no, I appreciate that.
Condolence to city councilman, send, condolence to city councilman Sandra Thule. She found her brother deceased on Tuesday morning.